All right, we'll get started. Thank you for, everybody, for coming tonight. This is the regular City T K Council meeting, Monday, March 16th. Will you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Well, as you all know, we're living in some very unusual times right now. When this agenda was made, things were completely different than they are now, and I think they've even changed since I was driving home from the way to work today. When we decided to do this, I think you had, the CDC had said they thought people of, groups of 50 or less were permissible, and I think today they said 10 or less now is the new, is the new normal. So I think York, the City of York canceled their city council meeting. I think, I believe I heard Fort Mill had theirs early, but two people, two of the older gentlemen didn't show up. They were worried about their, for health reasons, being in a large crowd. So who knows what's going to happen next? If we're going to have another meeting next month? I don't know. You know, everything's moving so fast. I go into a meeting at 8:00 in the morning, and by 2:00 in the afternoon, whatever we talked about in the meeting has completely changed. So those of you who are thinking we're doing too much, we're overacting, you might be true. And then those of you who are thinking we're not doing too much, you could be true too, because this is just completely all-new territory. We just listen to D-Heck and our emergency services from our, from the governor's office and the state, because we don't have a dangerous disease office in T K, so we have to listen to our higher-ups to tell us when things are going on. So we'll just play that by ear, and you'll know as soon as we know. With that, let's go ahead and get started with the Joint Public Hearing and Planning Commission. Go ahead and take over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll call to order a public hearing regarding the amendment to the Windhaven Plan Development District Master Plan and Development Standards. We'll have a briefing from Susan Britt, then we'll open that for public comments, and then commissioners' comments, and then council comments. Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The original Windhaven Plan Development District and its subsequent development standards, which are the zoning text, was originally approved by council in 2016, and included a government and institutional use for a potential location of a middle school. The city, the developer, and the Fort Mill School District have worked very hard to make this possible. However, the Fort Mill School District has chosen not to purchase the property in Windhaven for a new school. That decision was based on their due diligence and the potentially high development cost for this property. After learning of this decision, the city has now renegotiated the uses within the development to increase the available commercial acreage and to align it with the land uses, with the policies and the land uses outlined in the recent 2020 update to the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. Be glad to answer any questions.
No, just to summarize then, I guess there's going to be an increase in housing from, no increase in the cap in the housing for the development district.
That's correct.
There'll be an increase of about 62 dwelling units. There will be a increase in the commercial acreage.
Yeah, but that's, that's not for the PDD.
Right.
The increase for, in, under, there's no increase in the cap in the PDD.
Right, right. No increase in the cap.
And so the other is a plating issue, not a zoning issue.
Understood, absolutely. And then the other plating benefits to the city are, of course, we double the amount of commercials acreage.
That's correct. Yeah, the original acreage had seven acres of commercial, now we have 15 plus.
Right, and a significant increase in the commercial square footage allowed.
That's correct.
So all great benefits to the city. And I guess the third benefit would be is the actual standards have been rewritten and renegotiated such that they incorporate all of the new mixed-use district elements from our comprehensive plan.
That's correct.
As far as permitted uses and architectural standards and all of those things.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. With that, then, we'll open that for public comments. I'd ask one thing. Were there any online comments received for the public hearing?
No, sir, there was not.
Okay, thanks. Is there anyone who signed up for public comments from the audience?
There are none.
There are none. We will then close the public comment period. Commissioners, any additional comments or thoughts?
The only comment that, the only comment that I'd like to make is that I would really like to see a little bit more guidance in the PDD on how the ratios of the different housing types are going to be incorporated.
All right, anything else? Matt, all right.
Counsel, any comments, thoughts?
Ryan, I know you've got some comments. We, this is the very first project Ryan and I worked on four years ago when we came on to the city council, and this was, this was, I would say, a knock-down drag-out for a while, for about three or four or five months.
Yep.
When we were on the former council. Started at 700 houses, went to, started at 800 houses. Ryan and I got into that there, then went to 700, then to 600, and it finally ended up at 400 houses. And the park and the hard siding and what else was there? Oh, the, the additional, well, this was before we had impact fees, so this was the very first.
Revenue per home.
Revenue per home. This was ahead of our time there, two years before impact fees. But we, so it was capped at 400, and then with the school getting a little bit bigger, it went down to, was it 300 or so houses?
274, I think.
Was it? 286, and what did it end up now?
329 is their current plan.
So 329 houses from 800, 700, and they even wanted apartments way back then. So I think considering where we were and what we ended up with, I'm sorry that we don't get the school anymore. I was really hoping we'd get that, but we're getting, we're almost doubling the commercial, and we're nowhere near the 400 houses. Anybody else have a comment?
Well, this is a builder with cash.
Yeah. This is Lennar. I'm familiar with Lennar there. Seem to be good quality builders.
I'll just add that my only concern about the update to the PDD was the same as Kate's, which we had some conversation about during the Planning Commission meeting, and, you know, I got some reassurance when Susan Britt reinforced that it does specify in the PDD that there has to be a balanced mix, and defining balance is where I think the question comes mostly, but hopefully that there's some consistency or equality there in terms of the number of residential, the number of detached. So.
Anything else? Okay, Chris, I'll finish the comments here, back to you.
All right, thank you. I think we'll close then the public hearing, and the Planning Commission will go and have a special meeting.
Okay. We will wait for you to depart, and we will carry on.
Bye. See you in a minute.
Okay, item 2A, we'd like to table that for a later date. Our Eagle Scout didn't want to come in with all this stuff going on, the virus.
You'll have to get a motion to a meeting.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table at this time. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, it's unanimous. And then the item 2B is a proclamation celebrating the Catawba Nuclear Station's 35th anniversary of power generation. There's nobody here to receive that, but I went ahead and signed that, and we will get them, that mailed off to them. Okay? Item 3 is public comments. Ryan, come on up here and talk about stuff.
Ambiguous.
Stuff, the man with stuff. Give me your name and address, and then tell me about stuff for three minutes.
Ryan Ross, 885 Corabel Way. Wait for Joseph to get ready.
Air Force guy, right?
Prior Air Force. I noticed there's no crayons. So I have a few questions still remaining from last month's council meeting, but before I get to those items, my first question is why are we here right now? I grasp that we have a serious item facing us, and it was serious enough for a city emergency proclamation, but yet the tennis courts are full. I drove by Runde Field, there's people out there throwing baseballs. So either we're going to be serious about it and shut everything down, I can't take a canoe out on the river right now because we closed the landing, but yet we're here in a council meeting. I looked through the agenda, and I was, I was checking for the emergency item that we had to have this meeting for, and I'm obviously missing it, but I'll stick around and wait to find out which one it is, because we're either going to take this seriously or we're not. And if we're not, then we are all held accountable for whatever happens to our citizens, sadly. So that was my first stuff item. My second stuff item, unfortunately, we can always kick a dead horse. So continuation from last month's discussions about the city manager. Charlie, no offense, we're going to talk about you, you're sitting right here, but I'm going to keep going at it. I wrote a few notes down because I was personally actually not going to say anything. Last month, I was, I was receptive to what you guys had to say, things were handled, you guys went through it all, but then as more and more information started coming out is when I started getting frustrated. I posed a question to three different council members here. When we had the, the letter that came out from the city attorney, there was, all three of you posted, and I submitted a question. Gus responded back and said he saw that I had answers. Ryan responded back and told me to come out to a meeting and get involved, and Heather gave me answers that he was licensed when the work was done, and he was licensed now. We'll come to find out that wasn't a truthful statement. When we start seeing the LOR that the city manager got, whether those items were factual or not, I'm starting to question the honesty that's coming out, which then makes me questioned when I'm told it was dealt with, if it was dealt with in a transparent manner. Because if it was dealt with, then there should be no problem giving transparency to what the questions and answers were. Do I think anything illegally was done? No, I honestly don't. Do I think it was handled in a terrible manner? Yes, completely so. I'm prior military. I know there are members of the council that are prior military. I have gotten my fair share of LORs in my life, and I've written a few. In reading that LOR, there was a whole lot of accusations with not a whole lot of proof to back it up. Did I, would I have personally signed it? I'm not on the council, but no, I wouldn't have either, and so I respect you for that. But at the same token, there needs to be some sort of challenges in these type of items. I have a list of questions. I will submit these questions and hopefully get straight answers this time.
I have just one question. Did I fail to write you back your email? Did I fail to answer your question?
Posted it in response to their public Facebook post, sir. I did not send an email because I assumed council posts.
Okay, gotcha. And I will just make one statement. This, like, when everybody, when this all started this morning, things are moving very swiftly, so things are, it's going to take a few minutes, a few days maybe for us to get all straightened out. You can go sit down. But there is some level of personal responsibility people have to take. So although we've closed, people are going to jump the fence, we get this, but we're going, you know, it'll get, it'll get solved sooner than later, but we had to make, hurry it. When they closed the schools, the school district people said, doesn't do any good to close the schools if all the kids could just congregate in the parks and the libraries. So that's why we hadn't, went ahead and did that right away. As soon as they announced, we announced. Are the kids going to jump the fence? Sure, but we have to, we've got more mothers calling us about what are you going to do about my kids than we do people worrying about canoeing down the river, I guess it is. So, but it'll get, you know, it'll take a day or two, but, but we're trying to get there. It's, everything's moving very quickly. Does anybody else want to comment on that, or should we move on? All right. That will close public comments. Item 4 is approval of minutes.
Do we allow to make public comments?
Go ahead, go ahead, sure.
So I acknowledge that there are...
Hold on a second.
Yes.
Let me get the clock. Name and address.
Thank you. Elizabeth Duda, 1081 Palmira Drive. I acknowledge that there are other things going on.
Are you sick?
I...
Voice sounds.
Allergies.
Okay.
I acknowledge that there are other things going on in the city right now, so I do appreciate the attention to this matter, when life will go back to normal, so at this, so I'm putting forth these comments. Last month, we stood here before you as a small group representing concerned residents who asked City of T K leadership to lead with professionalism and integrity and adhere to strong ethical standards, to avoid conflicts of interest and perceived conflicts of interest, to ensure that our growing city has appropriate policies and procedures and to follow them and to operate with common sense. We reminded you how as a group of concerned residents, we worked together for years to fight the inept sewage and water company that did not operate in our city's best interest. We asked critical, critical questions and publicly shared our findings and concerns until the decision-makers finally heeded and acted upon our concerns. Though bringing attention to the problem sometimes felt painful, it ultimately was in the best interest of the City of T K. After our years-long fight, the city water and sewer operations are now significantly improved. We're in a similar situation today. T K residents again have come together to appeal to you, the decision-makers, to heed and act upon our concerns. Our comments are not personal, but we continue to want what is best for our city. We ask our city leaders to be straightforward and responsive to the questions that we residents are asking and needs that we've identified. Mayor O'Neill and councilpersons Dash, Machunas, and Overman, I appreciated our discussion following last month's city council meeting. Councilperson Richard, you were the one councilperson from whom I did not hear. Residents appreciate the willingness to communicate with the public. Some comments raised a few questions. In response to the February 12th WCNC investigative report, three city council members posted a Facebook public statement with misleading or false information. To address residents' concern that the city manager's choice of the assistant city manager's spouse for the $78,000 T K Police Department project created a conflict of interest for the city, the three city council members wrote, "The assistant city manager was not involved in any selection process or in the construction process of the city's new police station." The questionable part about this statement is that it conflicts with the expectation that the assistant city manager step into the city manager role in his absence in the legal document designating the assistant city manager as two of the three officers in the nonprofit corporation designed to finance the T K Police Department. To address residents' concern that the assistant city manager's spouse was allowed to work for the city without a business license, any comment as if the company had a license to work in the city during the contract time or the previous work, one city councilperson wrote, "Yes, he has and had a business license." Another city councilperson explained the statement by noting his belief, which he acknowledged could have been erroneous, that Infant Audio-Visua LLC's business license fee could have been paid in arrears and thus retroactive for the work the business already had completed for the city.
Thank you, Liz.
The questionable part about these comments...
Thank you, Liz. Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, may I have someone else's time?
No.
Okay.
Why do we have these things to sign up for out there if you guys aren't going to sign up for it?
They took it.
Sorry?
They had taken it.
So you didn't come in on time. You were here before they took it up.
I wanted to go stand up.
What do you all want to do? I don't care.
Can I speak?
Yeah, finish reading it. Go ahead. Not Liz, but... Go ahead.
So you can't pull your time.
Yep.
Can't, you said can't pull your time.
No, you cannot pull your time.
Okay.
If Kelly wants to speak, Kelly can speak.
Okay, we'll, I'll submit the full comments in writing to you, too. So you can sit here. So is this all done? No, but we can skip to here. So it's not all done? Okay. You want to do this? Yes. Okay. We have these questions about our city leadership. Why did three city council members not acknowledge that city ordinances were broken and city management operated outside of policy? Given these facts, how does councilperson Richard justify the statement that city manager Funderburke is a top 10% city manager? And why does councilperson Richard, the one city council member, to not respond to Liz's concerns?
Erroneous claims.
Richard commented in the 21820 council meeting that the process was irresponsible and reckless. Would not a reasonable human being find the city manager was negligent? Here? Do we have enough time? How are you addressing concerns that the city attorney is not adequately counseling city council members on how to handle the concerns we have highlighted here, including the misleading public statements that the city attorney reportedly approved? Who hires the city attorney? Who pays the city attorney to perform the legal services for the city? Could the city attorney's legal opinions be impacted by this relationship and his longstanding working relationship with the city manager? What is the role of human resources in this situation? Recall, the human resources manager reports to the city manager. Why did the human resources manager not open a file to begin to document and monitor behavior of the city manager immediately upon issuing the letter of reprimand? How has the human resources manager handled employee complaints? How has the human resources manager handled employee exit interviews? How can city council consider the issues to be addressed via the letter of reprimand if the city manager refuted the letter? What has the city council done to evaluate the city manager's continued performance and to ensure that no further violations have incurred that, as stated in the letter of reprimand, could result in immediate termination? If the city manager's employment is not terminated as a result of these concerns, we ask that the city council take these actions. One, hire an independent consultant to evaluate city governance practices, policies, and procedures. Include a review of the city's leadership governance structure, employee handbook, whistleblower policy, and purchasing pile, policy. Hire an independent consultant to audit the city's procurement practices for the past 10 years. Include the jobs currently listed on the city website and those not listed on the website, to include the water tower and trash and recycling. Hire an independent consultant to evaluate city leadership's handling of the issues that residents are currently raising, to include city manager's actions, the roles of the city attorney, and human resources, the letter of reprimand and letter of rebuttal, human resources document, documented follow-up, or lack of documented follow-up to the letter of reprimand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? We'll move on.
I've got one real quick. What's your goal? I mean, and, and part of that's rhetorical, because we know what the goal here is. Infant Audio did that work. They did that work on the fire station, they did work on PD. We've looked into it, and we feel like the pricing was advantageous, but we can't go back and undo that work. Five reasonably, reasonably intelligent people. If your goal is, seems to be as stated, that your goal is to terminate our city manager. At the time that all this happened, five reasonably, reasonably intelligent people that were elected by the citizens looked at the situation, and we handled it. We handled it months ago. Kelly, there was a file. I think that most of this information you had, you've had for some months. Why is it being raised now? Why wasn't it raised months ago?
So two of you have mentioned to me that there was a file on a desk of an employee with Kelly's name.
Not on a desk, on a computer of an employee with Kelly's name on it. They basically had the same questions that Michelle Bowden asked. So I mean, if this...
And Kelly's not familiar with this file.
Okay, well, I don't know. Why wasn't this issue raised months ago? But regardless of that, at the time that it was done, we discussed things, we felt like we took appropriate action. We did this quite some time ago, and if that changes, then we'll take action at that time as well. But at this particular time, I personally, I can't speak for everybody else, but I've seen nothing other than we did take action, have not seen any concerns out of our city manager since then, certainly nothing to warrant termination. So if that's your goal, then I, I don't know. Here again, I'm not going to speak for everybody else, I'm going to speak for myself.
So again, I hope that the introduction was clear. The goal is for the city to lead with professionalism, integrity, and adhere to strong ethical standards, and we would like you to hold people accountable for their actions.
And I think we did. Thank you for your time.
And I will, I will just say, some of your, your comments, Gus, I, I do not agree with. I have seen some actions and some things that I would not find to be professional, professional, that were taken by the city manager since the letter of reprimand, some of which I've raised to city council members, clearly in terms of what occurred and how I felt about it and how I felt it was inappropriate. So I, I know you might feel like everything is fine and dandy. I would say that I have seen very inappropriate things that caused me a lot of concern, so.
Perception is a funny thing.
So then I ask you to make sure that Human Resources had opened up a file to make sure that it's being documented, these concerns, and I believe that the independent consultant and audit could help look at these issues. I believe that those proposals could help address these concerns.
Thank you.
Since I was specifically named on this, I'll just say, I have heard from Liz, and I heard from you, Heather, when we spoke about a file. I have no information, I have no knowledge what that is, so I don't have that information. Didn't have it prior to the news thing. Also, the city manager said on the February newscast to Michelle Bowden that the general contractor hired Infant Audio, not the city. So my concern is, we're still not being honest. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number four, approval of minutes. Counsel, you've seen the February 18th and the March 4th minutes. Are there any additions, subtractions, deletions? Hearing none.
So I want to just take a moment to say that, counsel, we all received an email earlier today from Ms. Duda identifying some areas that were not captured in the minutes. It's been requested by them to include these in the minutes, and so I would like us to consider including the addition of those.
There's a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Hearing no second, that issue is dead. Anything else? Any additions, subtractions, or deletions?
None.
Looks good, okay. It will be published as written. Item number five, committee appointments. Do we have committee votes completed?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've got a list of names as your top nominees for each of the positions. Do you want me to read them all for all of them, or do you want to vote per, or just, didn't we already vote? Well, you, you gave me the nominations. You actually have to vote on it. So I can go each board, each commission, or I can read all the names and what commission it's for, and you can do one, one vote, however you put it, whichever way you want to go with it.
Okay, so, yeah, I see what you're saying. Okay, go ahead and do it that way, just we'll do one vote.
Okay. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, your top three nominees are James Arany, Lisa Marie Johnson, and Tony Stone. For the Building Codes of Appeals Board, Christine Farcus. For the Economic Development Commission, you have Stephen Coppola, Nicholas Farmer, Kristoff Halverson, Roger Metz, and Jim Stalford. For the Planning Commission, Nick Amico, Matt DeWitt, Chris Leonard, and Ryan Ross. For the Stormwater Commission, Gerald Ramirez. And for the T K Forever Foundation, Pete Cherakazi and Carolyn Hasty. Those are your nominees for each of those boards, committees, and commissions.
So we just need a motion?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the nominees as stated by the city manager.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Item 6, committee reports. Do you want to say something about T K Forever, or are we passing on?
I'm going to forward my comments to the city manager, who's going to cover everything in his manager's report tonight.
Item 6B, Gus, with the economic development.
We met on February 24th. We discussed the properties being cleared over by the roundabout at Walmart and the plans for the brewery, tap house, talked about what's going on over at Game On. Most important thing was we are, or they are, excuse me, coming up with a list of specifically what we're looking for in terms of the retail to be built in our undeveloped and underdeveloped areas. Of course, with the changes made to Windhaven, that's going to be even more important. There's five firms that they looked at. They were going to refine a scorecard for each of the firms, so it would be better to make a decision before they release RFP for the retail consultants. March 23rd will be our next meeting. Also talked about the Donny Shell Golf Tournament that is coming in September. We're very happy that he chose T K and our golf club and our shore club and the Glennon Center to host this event. The Economic Development Commission is working diligently to find sponsors for this great, great event. It's going to be very huge for, for our city. It's going to make us look good, which is something we need. And we even talked about when the tournament comes around, encouraging those residents that live on the golf course to actually tailgate during the tournament, just to show support for the tournament and the golfers and the celebrities and the people that are going out of their way to, to come down and see us. That's about it.
Right. Item six C, Planning Commission with Alicia.
All right. Planning Commission met last month and we, as discussed in our work plan, we have each planning member assigned to different planning boards throughout the county north of seventy-seven. So, we had some updates on the different planning commissions that met and just some general feedback about that, that the planning commission members have received favorable responses from these neighbor organizations. And I just want to point out to the planning commission members here, that is a lot of extra time you all are spending, not only in the car, through traffic, but at those meetings and really, we're, we're really lucky to have you guys dedicating your time to that, so thank you guys so much. I know that it will really help our city in, in building relationships with our fellow government entities. Chris Chairman Leonard and Susan Britt attended the Fort Mill Township Planning Joint Advisory Board Exploratory Meeting in March. That group is looking to, to create an advisory board that can assist in coordinating development across the three municipalities, actually jurisdictions, York County, Fort Mill, Antigua Cay, all again located north of the river. Four commissioner positions, as you all know, were up and one of our current members announced that he would not, he did not intend to reapply, so as you, you might know at this point. There was a lot of discussion about Windhaven. You'll see that's on our agenda today, and we're looking forward to the planning commission's recommendation on that. They did discuss the potential need for the animal ordinance that's also on our agenda today. They did just some surface level research and analysis in terms of what other cities and towns in our area are doing regarding that and just talked about where, where people, what people were thinking in regards to if they were to develop some type of recommendation for city council.
Well done. All right. Let's move on to item seven A. Unfinished business, resolution for public art and monuments. At their February third meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of a resolution establishing a public art and monuments policy for the city. The purpose of this policy is to establish the criteria for informed, transparent, and high-quality decision-making when approving or declining proposed public art projects which will form a long-term aspect of the city's citizens and visitors' experience and cultural enhancement. This policy will apply to all and any public art projects and monuments located or proposed in the public domain within the city of TK municipal boundaries. These may be standalone projects or proposals from within council or from other community, embellishments to Capitol Works, or other proposals arising from time to time. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll consider a motion.
Mayor, members of council, a motion to approve the resolution establishing the city of TK's public art and monuments policy.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Six, let's go to new business. Go ahead, Christopher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In our special meeting, we voted unanimously to recommend approval of the Windhaven PDD standards. And what we also decided related to the comments that were received on the specific and the balanced, I think as you're aware, you have a plat coming up, the preliminary fire, actual final plat that's going to be redone, and it'll have to get redone. On those plats, we have the ability to control the balance of dwelling unit types, and so we'll be able to take that into consideration as the final plats come before planning commission. So, I think we've got an answer to how we address that specific issue. So, our, our vote was to recommend approval.
Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chris. Let's go to item eight B. This is the introduction, first reading of an ordinance to amend the Windhaven Plan Development District Master Plan and Development Standards. The original Windhaven, Windhaven Plan Development District and Development Standards was approved by council in April of 2016 and included a government and institutional use for the potential location of a new middle school. While the city, the developer, and the Fort Mill School District worked very hard to make this possible, Fort Mill School District has chosen not to purchase property in Windhaven for the sec- for the new school site. Their decision is based on their due diligence and potentially high development cost. After learning of the district's decision, the city has now renegotiated the uses within the development to further increase our availability, our available commercial acreage and align with the policies and land uses outlined the recent 2020 update to the 2025 TK Comprehensive Plan. This amendment to the PDD plan and development standards provides for much-needed additional commercial acreage done on walking neighborhood scale that will serve as a future city center and gateway. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd make a mo- like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the Windhaven Plan Development District Master Plan and Development Standards.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Move down a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Six, I'm sorry, eight C. Trying to get ahead here.
Mr. Mayor, I make, like to make a motion to table.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, yes. That's the one we're going to table. I have a motion to table and a second. Let me go ahead and read what we're tableing first.
Sorry, I guess I should put that in there.
Sometimes we just get ahead. Okay, this is the consideration of approval of a financial security and performance labor and materials certi- agreement for Windhaven Phase One, and we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we can go to the next one. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get ahead real fast because I know everybody wants to be away from everybody's breathing and germ spreading and all that stuff. Okay, six, I'm sorry, eight D is a discussion. We're going to discuss an ordinance seventy-seven, which is our zoning code, is currently silent regarding the regulation or prohibition of the raising and sheltering of domestic poultry and livestock within the municipal boundaries. When responding to complaints, staff's only recourse is to determine if the animals are proposing a, are proposing a threat to the peace and health of the community and referring the complaint to York County Animal Control. No, I'm laughing, I guess. I didn't, I had no idea we had this problem. Are we have, we have goats and pigs and zebras, or what? There has been an increase in this type of complaints regarding poultry and domestic livestock. Staff is seeking the guidance and direction of council on this issue. Now, you know why we're here, Ryan. This stuff is important.
I, I just want to verify, there was a sheep. Is that correct?
Sheep and a, a wild turkey that had been caged.
And goats.
And some goats. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Menor, Mr. Gus.
I'm kind of choked up.
Gus. So, we'll be okay with that. We've had this discussion back in 2015, primarily in relationship to poultry, because we had a lot of people who were getting into more, into urban agriculture and wanting to have, you know, backyard chickens, were wanting some guidance about that, and we were also getting some complaints about people who had rearranged chickens. So, at that time, council decided that, okay, this really isn't a big issue at this time. We might revisit this in the future. It now seems to have been growing more and more. So, not only do we have chickens, but now we're starting to get, oh, pot-bellied pig, that's can be considered a pet, but then when you start getting pygmy goats and now baby sheep, and then someone caught a wild turkey and had it in a cage in their yard, and we couldn't do anything about it, except we were able to call DNR on that one, because York County Animal Control, unless they're designated as a nuisance animal, they're also not, have the ability to do anything about it. So, we're just wanting to have some guidance, because generally with staff, when we, we're complaint-driven, we react to a complaint. We tell someone, well, your chickens are being a nuisance, they're unhappy. Then we tell the person who complained, we have no regulations on, our, our prohibitions on, on the poultry. They get unhappy. So, you end up with, you know, potentially both sides being unhappy and staff's caught in the middle, so we just wanted some direction.
Okay, so, as it is now, we, we do allow chickens, because I know a couple of people have chickens, and did we ever limit it to how many chickens?
No, sir, we did nothing.
We didn't. Well, I thought it was four.
I thought it was limited to four and no roosters.
No.
There's no limitations on it whatsoever.
It was never-
But we did say no roosters, right?
No, there's no-
There's no regulations, period.
-tied to certain ordinance.
It's very, it's silent. Now, when people call us and ask for a recommendation, we say, well, you know, what we'll tell you is that we have nothing to prohibit you from having chickens, but we recommend that you know, have no more than four and that you have no roosters. You know, the roosters only serve one purpose and, and, you know, you don't really need to have that to have fresh eggs. So, anyway, that's, at this point, we-
I know.
All I can say is it's got to be the allergies.
Yeah, this is such a fun job.
I'm really getting, getting-
Really stuffy.
Thought I might lighten up the moments a little bit here. So, but anyway, so, you know, we have, we have nothing, no guidance. Our recommendation in 2015 was to regulate the keeping of, of poultry and prohibit outright the keeping of domesticated livestock. So, what you had in your packet was the recommendation that we had come forward in, in 2015. And if, at the planning commission, there were additional discussions and saying, well, perhaps we may want to do what, similar to what the city of Rock Hill does, which does allow some what we might classify as livestock, if it's a, a pet variety, such as a pot-bellied pig or something of that nature, and to try to align ourselves more with, with what they do, because they also, they do regulate the, the keeping of, of chickens.
I actually did a Facebook post on this, and I had over a hundred comments. So, clearly, people are very serious about poultry and livestock one way or the other. So, you know, contentious subject. Clearly, we were getting pretty good at these.
And who knew goat yoga was a thing?
I've done goat yoga. It's actually really fun.
In, in the city? In the city?
No, in Rock Hill, actually, yeah. So-
They live on a farm and are brought into the place for yoga.
That's right. That's right. So, here is my feedback based on everything that I heard from everybody. I'm going to give you my personal take on this and then give you what I think we should do based on what everybody told us, or what everybody told me. I personally don't have an issue with chickens. I don't think it's a big deal. The sheep kind of threw me for a loop, I'm not going to lie. So, I, you know, I think there's some, somewhere in between that we can come to an agreement to. What, here's what I would recommend. If we are going to regulate poultry, I would say that we do put a solid number on chickens, whether that's four or six, or whatever we think the solid number is. Obviously, absolutely no roosters and that they need to be contained. I don't know if we get super-specific on the containment right now, you know, how it, their coop has to be, or, you know, where it has to be and that kind of thing. Obviously, I hope they're putting it in their backyard and not having chickens in their front yard, but maybe that needs to be included. So, that would I, what I would say for chickens. I think as far as livestock that currently exists and poultry as well, that we should have some kind of permit that people are required to get. They don't have to pay for it, but they do need to document the fact that they have a wild animal, or farm animal, I guess, not wild animal, farm animal in their backyard. I think at that point, once that animal, for livestock specifically, once that animal passes, they no longer have the sheep, they wouldn't need to then renew their permit, and they would essentially be grandfathered in, but then they wouldn't be able to get another sheep after said sheep dies. That's, that is my synopsis based on all the feedback that I received.
I'm just wondering about the pets part. I mean, we've got some pretty strange pets. I know there's some ferrets out there. Are those considered farm animals? Because ferrets are fur-bearing, right?
Now, so, those are, those are considered domesticated pets.
Those are pets? Okay. What about pot-bellied pigs?
Those are, meet the definition. In, in Rock Hill, they eliminate pot-bellied pigs from their definition of swine, because they make that more of a, a pet. We could get that specific if that's what-
So, we, I, it sounds like we'd have to, I don't know if we, because then we got parrots and we've got, what other kind of weird birds?
Well, I think the solution is the, the definition of livestock in, in what's written from 2015.
That's correct.
I think if we clearly define, you know, what, what, what is considered livestock and what could be considered a pet with some flexibility or leeway there, then-
That, that's, that's right. The livestock clearly refers to those domesticated animals such as swine, horses, mules, goats, sheep.
So, what's in TK that we were doing this? I mean, you said we have goats here? We do have goats here?
We do. What's the public, like, so what are the complaints? Is it regarding noise? Is it smell? Is it public, are there public health concerns because stormwater runoff's creating the poo in one person's yard to flow into the next? Like, what is-
Generally, it's, it's, usually would, would be noise with a rooster. Sometimes it's, it smells if they haven't cleaned the contain, the containment area. Sometimes it's animals running loose. Generally, the, we, we do get a lot of calls regarding if, saying, oh, well, I'm thinking about getting a pygmy goat as a pet for my kid, is that permitted? And if so, what are the requirements for it? And then I have to tell them we're silent on that, but I do say that, okay, if you get complaint, if we get complaints regarding items such as noise, smells, destruction of property, or anything of that nature, then we'll refer it to York County Animal Control, and then you can be cited.
So, I'm, I'm trying to think of, what's a, a pygmy goat is a very small goat, obviously.
They are.
Are they no- are they noisy?
Um-
Do they eat? A lot of grass, I guess? I mean, do they?
If you've ever heard a goat cry, it sounds very much like a, a crying baby, and when it's multiplied by three or four, it gets pretty loud.
Got any pictures?
I raise dwarf Nigerian goats on my farm.
Oh, really?
So, they're cute, they're sweet.
Well, how do we get a bunch of public comments going? Do we, we got a Facebook post, or we do some social media?
Can we def, can we defer to the planning commission to study and, and provide us with a recommendation? I mean, I guess they've already started to look into it.
Moustache is correct. I mean, this would fall into your ordinance seventy-seven, so you would need a pla- a recommendation from planning commission. You'd have to do a public hearing.
You want to take that one on, Chris? Go, go look into all the different kind of farm animals that are permissible and not permissible in a, in a growing city like ours.
Yeah, there are best practices out there. There are cities that have, you know, the model ordinances, so to speak, and so, I mean, it would be very easy to duplicate that. I know a lot of now about all of this that I didn't know before.
The, the planning commission has done some preliminary research, and so Charlie's quite right, it would be under their purview to do research, draft the ordinance, then they may take what we, we started in 2015 and tweak this, and then come back to you with a recommendation.
All right. I didn't know we had wild animals, except for the ones on down Point Clear.
DNR didn't, didn't make them, uh, release the, the wild turkey.
They did make them release?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Any more input by anybody? I can just see this coming back where somebody's going to say, we didn't give it enough public, you know, comments or something, and six months from now saying, why are they getting rid of their rooster, or whatever they got.
Only from the person that owns the goats and the sheep, but anyway.
We could, as, as Ms., as Heather alluded to, we could, we could actually put in a grandfather clause and have that, you know, should that animal deceased, it would not be replaced, but it would be grandfathered at this point.
Everybody's going to go out and buy horses tonight.
Horses, oh gosh.
All right.
I think it's important, too. I mean, we have thirteen, over thirteen thousand people that live in this city, and it's, you know, high-density, three-point-two square miles. So, is it good for the sheep to live in somebody's small backyard either? Probably not. So, you know, is it humane? Is it sanitary? All of those things you have to think about when you have literally farm animals in backyards, so.
Wonderful. Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Susan. Let's go to item eight E, which is consideration of easement documents related to TMS number sixty-four, six forty-one dash zero-three dash zero-one dash zero-four-two, which is Thirty Forty Two Point Clear Drive. The owners of Thirty Forty Two Point Clear Drive have approached the city requesting easement, an access agreement onto the city-owned green belt that runs between their property and the five-seventy contour line of Lake Wiley for the purpose of constructing a pool. The city has a gravity sewer line that runs through the backyard, the address that does not have an easement. In exchange for the access requested by the property owner, they will be willing to provide the necessary sewer easement. This is identical to the item that council previously approved at the end of Windward Drive several months ago. I do remember that. Are there any comments? That was pretty straightforward before, right? Wasn't any problem? Anybody have any issues with that? Any questions or comments? Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve an access easement agreement and sewer easement agreement at TMS number six four one zero-three zero-one zero-four-two at Thirty Forty Two Point Clear Drive and authorize the city manager to execute said agreements.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, it's unanimous. Let's go to six F. I'm sorry, eight F. I don't know why I keep saying six tonight. This is an introduction, first reading of an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and sewer system revenue refunding bond of the city of TK, South Carolina in the principal amount of not exceeding seven million, seven hundred thousand to be designated Series twenty-twenty. This is a refunding and reissue. Getting a better interest rate? I guess I'll just read it and it'll tell me. In June of two thousand and fourteen, the city issued a revenue bond necessary for the acquisition of the former Utilities, Inc. water and sewer system in TK. The current interest rate on that bond is three point one-six percent and will be paid off in June two thousand and thirty-four. Based on the current market conditions, the city can refinance and move to an estimated interest rate of two point one-seven. This will provide an average cash flow savings of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred per year. It will also not extend the life of the bond beyond June of two thousand and thirty-four. Our financial advisors have this out for bid and banks, uh, to banks, and will know exactly the interest rate by the second and final reading of this ordinance, because this is a no-brainer. This is just saving thirty-seven, five hundred, it doesn't extend it, it doesn't add to the principal, it's just a refinancing of getting a better interest rate. Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and sewer system revenue refunding bond in the principal amount not exceeding seven million, seven hundred thousand dollars to be designated as a Series twenty-twenty and other matters related there.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Six G. Eight G. Uh, this is the emergency ordinance to temporary close all public parks and facilities to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and visitors. We've already signed this, it has to read as an ordinance?
No, so this is just here so to give council the opportunity to let the public know, uh, what you did yesterday and why you did it.
So this was an emergency ordinance in response to the schools closing. Um, we, the governor had a meeting at four o'clock, and I think an hour after that or so, we got notification that the schools would be closing in Fort Mill, and they requested that, it doesn't, well, they said if it doesn't do any good if, if they're, if they're, what do they call it, socially separating? Is that distancing?
With social.
The new watch word. The kids, if they're all gonna congregate in our parks, it doesn't do any good to, to let them out of school. So at their request, we, we did this, and we closed all of our parks, and as Ryan said, it's gonna take us a while to get everything clicking. I mean, this literally happened, uh, what, at five o'clock last night or so? So, uh, we'll get it right very soon. I'm sure it'll be, I'm sure it'll be very good tomorrow and Wednesday. But basically, just close all public parks, uh, the lower level of Glenon Center. Um, it does not close the restaurant. They have a, they have a sanitary plan to wipe off the tables, everything, when somebody eats and clean, whereas the men's breakfast that I go to, not always too sanitary down there, and they've got people. So, um, we're trying not to hurt businesses like restaurants and stuff, although many cities are already doing it, they're closing all the restaurants and, and theaters, I think, closed, so that's probably coming, but in the meantime, please go support your, your local restaurants and kinda give them a break, they're, they're having a hard time, or they will be having a hard time. Okay, let's see, where are we on now? Nine, city manager report, Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, at our workshop, uh, on March the fourth, uh, where we discussed, uh, potential scenarios for Phase One Catawba Park, um, we have worked through some of those scenarios with our, uh, with our engineers, our finance director, uh, Parks and Rec Director. Uh, I've sent this to y'all on Saturday, but just for the public, um, and I, I realize on the second screen on each of these scenarios, the, the numbers are gonna be hard to see, uh, but basically in scenario one, uh, your Phase One amount, uh, comes to five, uh, five point seven-three million dollars. Um, as council will recall, that was six point two-six-five, uh, previously. Uh, made some minor adjustments that really don't affect the overall, um, uh, look, feel, and playability of, of Phase One. Cash funded amount, uh, at two point oh-eight-four million dollars. Uh, your borrowing amount would be, if this was the, the route we, uh, council elected to go, would be three million, six hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars. Again, your term is still at five years, uh, at an interest rate of, of about, uh, two percent approximately, according to our financial advisors. So that's the screen that everybody, uh, playing along at home are probably gonna have a hard time seeing, but, uh, council, as you will recall, using cash on hand, um, uh, the, uh, to the tune of two point, uh, oh-eight-four, four-five-seven million. Um, you could see we've got, uh, we've added in another column from what you saw on March fourth, and that's your T K forever. Um, it's got a balance, uh, that one point one-nine-nine, um, that does assume that we are moving forward with the Taste of York County event at the end of, uh, April. Um, if we're not able to, hopefully we'll be able to reschedule that, still have it, uh, during this, uh, this fiscal year. But it also includes approximately twenty thousand dollars a year coming from that, uh, from that foundation, which is a very, very conservative number. Um, the, uh, the next, uh, new column is hospitality tax. You've got, uh, additional cash on hand from H tax, um, by year's end of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, according to our finance director. Um, this would be using forty thousand of the total, approximately two hundred and eighty thousand we get from H tax a ye, a year to go towards helping support this. It does still have the, um, the amenity fee, fee in lieu of amenity, uh, from Windhaven, that's the fifteen hundred dollars per home, uh, mayor, that you referenced earlier. Um, and then we separated out the River Falls impact fees from the other development impact fees, based on some of that conversation, just to show that. So this does include all non-millage available revenue. Um, at the end of the five-year borrowing, um, you'd still be good, uh, to the good at a projected, uh, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, uh, and change. Now, um, what do you get for that? Um, everything you see in yellow. Um, it is, uh, the four ball fields plus the one, um, smaller ball field, uh, that would be used for coaches pitch T-ball. It's got, uh, your open play meadow completely graded, irrigated, ready to go, uh, a place where we could hold, uh, our, our concerts, Fall Festival, things of that nature. Um, you've got right at two hundred and eighty, uh, give or take, uh, parking spaces paved, uh, and your main driveway loop is done, your maintenance building is done, um, your water and sewer infrastructure, uh, and everything is, is in there. So, uh, the only part that, that's pulled out, uh, still showing in, is a quote-unquote Phase Two, or the batting cages, we'll self-perform those. Um, they're not very expensive, and that's something that our maintenance staff could do and could do out of an operational budget. Uh, so that's basically Phase One, uh, the entire baseball complex, open play meadow in their entirety, uh, would be done under that type of scenario. Again, that's using all available non, um, tax millage or tax funds. Um, so, scenario two, um, Phase One amount, uh, four point eight-five million dollars, uh, so, uh, good, good bit less. The cash funded portion at one point nine-six-four, uh, four fifty-seven. The borrowing amount at two million, eight hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars, again, still at a five-year term, and at a two percent interest rate, figuring on, on doing the borrowing, um, during the, um, during two thousand and twenty. So what happens there? So you still got your, um, your H tax, or excuse me, your, uh, T K forever funds, um, in there. You've got your H tax dollars in there, still it's the same amount. We've removed the fifteen hundred dollar fee in lieu, uh, of amenity from Windhaven. We've removed the, um, um, impact fees, uh, from River Falls, uh, 'cause there were some concerns there, um, which I, I think, based on the conversation Susan had with that developer, I'm not as concerned about those dollars anymore, uh, as far as the timing of them. Um, and it leaves you to the good, a little over a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So what does that, uh, what does that do? Again, you got your, you got your ball fields, uh, the open play meadow has just got a rough grade on it. Um, your, uh, lower parking lot, uh, is not done, it's graded, but that's, that's it. Your sidewalk coming in from the Lakeridge area and then contending over to the parking lot and surrounding the baseball fields, those are not done, so all those things in pink. And your, uh, main parking lot where the pink and yellow, uh, stripe is, that is a gravel parking lot, uh, it's not paved at all. The pavement would be pushed to that Phase Two. So if, uh, it's council's decision to not use the fee in lieu, uh, from Windhaven, uh, and to calculate this based on not having, uh, any impact fees from River Falls in the next five years, that's basically what your Phase One option looks like. Um, we also don't have the, uh, the maintenance building, um, that's shaded out in pink as, as a subsequent phase or Phase Two. So that would be a scenario two option. Your funding scenario three, um, isn't, isn't really bad, uh, to be quite honest, it's not much different than your funding scenario one. Um, your Phase One amount is at five million, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Your cash funded at, uh, one million, uh, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, four fifty-seven. Borrowing amount at, uh, three million, four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, still at the five-year term, still at the, uh, two percent rate. With that, um, you've still got your T K forever funds, uh, you've still got your H tax funds. We have, uh, not using, uh, the fifteen hundred dollar fee in lieu of amenity funds, uh, from Windhaven, um, but are considering the, um, impact fees from River Falls. Now, uh, council, if, if you saw on the information I sent you over the weekend, that first year, um, is, is basically, we've discounted that, uh, to, almost in half, um, and then moved that through the subsequent years. Uh, based on conversation that Susan had with, uh, with Greenhawk soon after our last meeting, uh, the workshop, um, they should be coming back to planning commission possibly by May, um, with their preliminary plat.
That's River Falls.
Yes, sir. Uh, to get that going. Again, they have extended their, uh, permit with SEDHEC, um, their stormwater permit. Uh, they already put that in place, they're not changing the plat from what it was under Eastwood. Um, so still, yeah, it kinda streamlined that process. Um, if planning commission approves that, that preliminary plat in, um, in, at their May meeting, uh, which is when it's anticipated to get to them, they should start moving forward pretty quickly to where they'll be going vertical and we'll start receiving impact fees from them in two thousand and twenty-one, um, as, as we've shown under this scenario. Um, here's the, here's the, the concern, if you will. Um, you've got just over thirty thousand dollars, almost thirty thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, in that first year that we would have to cover, okay? We, we don't, we would not be bringing in enough cash from these non-tax revenues to cover. So that would be something that if this is the, the route that council wants to go, that would be what staff would have to figure out through the, uh, budget process, uh, as, as we get, um, as we dive into that, is coming up with a way to, to make up that thirty thousand. Some of it, you know, depending on what happens with, uh, some of the stuff that, um, um, council, or Mayor Protem, uh, Machunas mentioned, uh, in the way of economic development, some of the new things that are coming into Stonecrest, you know, some of it could be in H tax, but I, I would feel like that we're, we're definitely gonna have to fund, we would have to fund some out of our, uh, general fund budget under this type of scenario. But after that first year, you end up with almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the good as those other fees start coming in. So what do you get for that under a Phase One scenario? Basically, the, the, um, the islands, concrete islands with landscaping in the, uh, parking lots, uh, and the maintenance building, um, are out. Everything else would be in that Phase One. So, um, again, it, it really is gonna hinge around how comfortable you are with River Falls impact fees, how comfortable you are, uh, or what direction you wanna go with the Windhaven fee in lieu of amenity, um, you know, that would be coming in there. Don't have to, the good thing is you don't have to make that decision tonight. Um, but wanted to make sure y'all had this, um, you know, so y'all could be looking at it, coming up with whatever questions y'all've got as we continue to move forward. We have directed, uh, the engineers to go ahead and finish that Phase One, uh, construction documents. Um, once council is, is ready for them to put that out for bid, they can do so. Again, you still haven't committed to anything, see what the bids come in at, and then you'd be prepared to have that conversation as far as which way, uh, what, what revenues you were, you were wanting to use. And obviously, we would have your financial advisors back in here with you, uh, as part of those conversations. So that's the update on Catawba Park Phase One. You want me to pause for any questions on Catawba Park or just keep going?
Um, just a question, since we talked about the fee in lieu. What is the current acreage for the Windhaven, uh, park?
It's-
About twenty acres?
It's, it's a total of twenty acres, but you've got approximately three acres right in the middle of it where you've got the overhead transmission lines. You do parking under there, but you wouldn't be able to do ball fields and, and things like that. Uh, we've not gotten into it as far as how much of, uh, the remaining acreage outside of the transmission lines are actually usable, 'cause you do have some gullies back towards the back with a stream off of the back property. Um, so we, we haven't gotten into that level yet.
We don't know what we're gonna do with it yet.
That is correct. There, there are no current plans for that property, yes.
I'd, um-
And Windhaven will have amenities. Um, actually, I believe they told us Phase Two, in their Phase Two plan with a clubhouse, swimming pool, playground type thing. Um, yeah, basically what Lakeridge has, but with less than half the number of homes.
So the cheapest thing we could do is just level it out to make it a, an open meadow type place?
You could do open meadow, you could do disc golf.
That doesn't cost much, does it?
You could do a playground, yeah, right, that is correct.
Get, get kind of a, just a ballpark estimate on that.
Okay.
So we're not, just to, when we roll it all up into this.
Sure.
And, uh, since we're doing, um, Windjammer Park, we were worried about saving three thousand here, four thousand there and stuff. Um, you know, I've really, now that see this and how much money we're gonna spend, you know, in a bond, in a package, maybe we could roll up three or four thousand in that, I mean, to make it a first-class, um, entity that we were gonna do up there, we were talking about taking the stone away or something, you know, just make it really sharp.
I've got a, I've got an update for you on that. That's the very next thing. Yes, sir. The Windjammer Park, yes.
Okay, we are closing the park today. Windjammer Park for construction.
We closed all the parks last night.
I mean, for, but we were gonna close it today anyway.
Windjammer is, is closed, yes, sir. Uh, just taking a note on the, on the Windhaven thing. So, Windjammer, uh, council, um, you know, we, we've had some discussions, uh, one-on-ones, and I know y'all've had some discussions. Um, there was some concern, um, uh, and, uh, I think, um, spot on, um, from, from Mr. Dash. Um, let's, let's get Windjammer done, um, talking with, uh, with Joey, um, through this. Really, if council is, is, um, okay with using, um, the funds that were allocated towards Pit Karen to go towards this, basically, you're gonna end up with a building, it won't be a green metal roof, it'll be architectural shingles that match the rest of our buildings. Uh, but you'll have what you see there with, uh, with the gutters, the stone around the base of the building, the stone around the columns, um, trex boards being used on the deck, basically everything that was originally designed into it, with the exception of, we're still gonna remove those, uh, floor drains and the two bathrooms and the mop sink, they're just, there's, we don't have a need for them.
What about the garage door?
Garage door's in there, a whole bit. Uh, ski team is, uh, is having conversations about potentially covering the cost of that door, but you're talking roughly eighteen hundred, two thousand dollars. It's, it's not an astronomical expense, uh, but they are having that conversation. So, uh, based on, uh, a, uh, budgetary cost estimate I got from an asphalt contractor, it, what you see in dark black is currently a gravel parking lot, all that could be paved and lined. Uh, I haven't taken measurements yet to see exactly how many parking spaces we could get in there, and then you would have a, um, paved trail the rest of the way. We really can't pave any more than that up there because of septic tank. Uh, but at least we give you a nice paved pathway, uh, all the way up to the, uh, to the building. So everything that's gravel down there, except for that area around the, uh, septic tank, would be paved. Um, that, that gravel area, we would use signage to denote that as golf cart parking, since you would have that, um, those outlets for people to plug their chargers into, uh, while they're visiting the park. Uh, if they don't wanna do that, and they wanna park in regular parking space, they would have that opportunity, but-
Just make sure people understand that there's gonna be golf cart chargers up there by the-
Outlets for the chargers.
You're gonna have to bring your own charger, but we're gonna give you the electricity. And there's gonna be-
So-
There's gonna be parking for golf carts up on top that won't be used for cars, so that when you come up there, we're trying to get people out of their cars, we can put a lot more golf carts up there than we can cars. So come on your golf carts, um, save the parking space, and we'll be able to, if you bring your own cart, sorry?
Get a free charge.
Get a free charge, yeah.
There you go. Uh, so it's, it's got literally, um, with the exception of those, uh, few minor items, uh, it's got everything in it.[1715.23] in it. Everything put back on it to match what, what y'all saw in that original design. But again, the only way, so we'll have to use a little bit of our park maintenance money, as I said in, in my note to y'all this weekend.
We'll figure it out.
It's not an astronomical amount. Talking with your Parks and Recreation Director, he says he can make that work. We may have to put one or two projects on hold until later in the budget year, just to see how things look financially before pulling the trigger on those. And the only other thing we would need is, is direction from council that you're okay with us using that, the 15,000 that was allocated towards Pit Karen in your H tax budget, to be able to use that towards this project. Then I can give that, that information to the contractor in the morning, they're supposed to get started, provided that power gets, gets disconnected.
And tell, tell Tim we want a, a solar light on that T K K logo.
We've got, we've got lighting in the soffit that'll be aimed directly at. Yes, sir, and their own photo cells.
Good.
Yes, sir. So.
Yes, yes. My, my, my direction would be to use the Pit Karen money, we budget for it in the next fiscal year, to do those updates there. As we, we've, I've said to all of you, is if we're going to do it, let's do it right and make it, make it nice.
I would have said we were going to make it up in H tax, but with the economy getting the way it is, I don't know, you know. Seriously, it's a sad thing. It's a, we could have made that up so fast in H tax, you know, Pit Karen, but, you know, we just need to get everybody out and go to restaurants and still have fun. Don't close down everything, just, you know, guys get out and still do stuff.
I, I agree, in terms of using the Pit Karen, you know, as we talked about through email. The only thing in terms of the, what you recommended deducting, I did have some concerns still about removing the floor drain in the restrooms, just because it is a facility that's going to be used by a lot of people and kids that are like in the water, and then they're out running into the bathroom, and then their swimsuits get, there's like a lot of water. And so I was just kind of thinking through, like, what is that experience like? And I thought, you know, if, if the floors did have the drains in the restroom, it just allows you to clean up after that, or at least the, the water coming off everyone from swimming in the lake to, you know, have somewhere to go, that makes sense. And it's at a small price, I mean.
600 bucks. If that, if that, if y'all want that back in there, we can, we can do that.
I, I mean, I would.
That's what you want to do.
I would suggest putting that in, but.
600, you want a drain?
I mean, that.
Do you want a drain?
I don't care.
We have three I don't cares. You want a drain?
So.
Good, okay. Everybody happy now? Everybody good? Groovy? This is going to be a top-notch facility up here. This is going to be something we can really be proud of. And we got 120,000 from somebody else. So we got all play together for free, and now we're getting this one basically for free, except for the little accoutrements we have to put into it. But when somebody else pays for our parks, that's a, that's a good thing.
Yes, sir. Last thing I've got, and this is just real, I'll try to be as quickly as I can on the city's COVID-19 response. Council, y'all have already gotten a lot of this information, and Joseph has now created a webpage on our site to basically give you a one, give the public a one-stop shop as far as things in T K K and what's happening. But based on the, from the information from the CDC, council, I recommend that y'all consider canceling your upcoming board commission committee meetings until May. That's y'all's call, but our recommendation is that we hold off on those board and committee and commission meetings for the next month.
So planning commission?
That, that would be all, all your groups.
More time for research.
More time for research, there you go.
That's, that's my recommendation. If council is okay with that, we can get the word out to, to those groups.
Can't you let them decide if you guys want to meet or not?
Well, they, they, they meet in this facility, so if we're going to let them meet, then I've got to arrange to have these facilities open for them for their meetings. Most of them have a staff liaison, but you're mainly talking about planning commission, economic development, and TK forever, those three groups, putting a pause for a month.
Would you make a determination based on business, like the animals? Sure. If there's something, maybe a little more critical.
Staff doesn't have the authority to call those off, and that's why I'm bringing it up for y'all to discuss tonight.
Well, the way the, the speed of everything be going, it might be, it might be decided for us in, you know, the next day or two, when they close everything down, so.
Okay. Just hang tight, monitor.
Just hang tight, monitor.
Okay. Good enough. All facilities have been closed per ordinance 548, as the mayor said. Yeah, some of these facilities, yeah, at some of our parks where there's just not a fence to lock up, it's, it's a little more difficult as PDCs, folks, Patrol C's, folks, they're, they are asking them to leave the facilities we could lock, we, we have locked. All recreation programs have been postponed until further notice. We have postponed municipal court for tomorrow night, the new court date. Folks just need to contact our clerk of court, and this information is on our website. We've moved to critical staffing mode at this time, that will begin tomorrow morning. Staff that is able to telecommute or work from home will do so. Department heads have submitted revised staff schedules to account for the next three weeks. We are staying in, in communication with E O C, county leadership, and leadership from the surrounding municipalities. I have implemented our continuity of operations plan. Council, I sent that to y'all this afternoon, and that Joseph has placed it on our website. It includes succession plans for critical roles within the organization and alternative work sites, should it come to that. We are continuing to monitor information from the state emergency management, and may need to close city hall to the public if necessary, council. I got an update from Fort Millstown manager. They are not closing access tomorrow, but they are mainly because they're waiting on some signage, based on the way their facility is laid out. They are closing it on Wednesday. My plan had been to wait until there was a confirmed case in York County before we closed access to the public. We would still work, be there to answer calls and, and emails, but would be directing the public to use our online, you know, platforms, you know, to do business with the city. Do y'all, do y'all want to close? Do you think we should close off public access? We can do that as early as tomorrow morning. We can do it Wednesday, we can wait until there's a confirmed case. Just looking for some guidance and direction from y'all on that, considering others are moving forward beforehand.
I would say delay closing as long as you can, whatever y'all feel comfortable with doing.
Okay.
So we can continue to serve the public, but if, if y'all feel like it's going to get too dicey, then of course, close.
We'll continue to monitor.
Just listen to the news, right?
Yep. We will continue to have calls with E O C daily, conference calls with them, so we'll most certainly be up to date on it. And Chief Asti has been monitoring this situation for probably the last four weeks, four and a half weeks for us, very closely with CDC and S E D hack. We have not made a decision yet on the April concert or Taste of York County, but those decisions could be coming over the next two and a half to three weeks. So that's where we're at, but the big thing for the public, obviously, we want them to continue, continue to watch S E D hack website, the CDC website, but if they're looking for things that we're actually doing here locally, we're going to share those things on, we've created a page, where we'll be sharing the CDC and S E D hack information, as well as what's happening here. So you can find that link directly on our homepage. Joseph got that set up this afternoon for us. And that concludes my report for this evening, sir.
All right. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, let's move to council comments. We'll start with Ryan.
Charlie, great job as usual. Keep up the great work. Guys, the COVID-19, real deal. Do your part, keep your separation, what they call it, social distancing, as early, earlier. It's going to get way worse before it gets better, so everybody do their part and be safe out there, please.
Alicia.
I just want to take a moment to thank all of those that applied to serve on boards, all those who currently serve on boards, all those who have. You know, a lot of work, important work occurs in, in those commissions and, and board meetings, and we know that we certainly couldn't do all the work that needed to be done, so we're, we're certainly grateful for the time that you got, you all dedicate to, to focusing on those specific committees. So thank you, thank you all for that. And if you wanted to be on a committee and you didn't get an opportunity to, I believe there are still several commissions, boards and commissions open, and there are also always volunteer opportunities with the city, and I think with the Lions, Lions Club and other organizations throughout our community. So we encourage you still to get involved, and, and we thank you. The other thing I want to say is just thank you to those who came out to speak today. I know it's, it's not easy to speak up, but, you know, we're here to serve you, we appreciate your comments and, and your feedback, and I'll do everything I can to ensure transparency and, and so, thank you.
Heather.
All right. Congratulations to those who are elected to the committees and commissions tonight. That's great. We're, we're really grateful to the time that you put into it, as, as Alicia mentioned. One thing that resident has reached out to me and asked me to get your feedback on, so I will just bring it up in my comments, and we can go from there. I just said I would do it. So RV parking, apparently as our ordinance states right now, people can get a 72-hour permit, and they are able to re-up that four times within a 30-day period. So essentially, you can park an RV in your driveway for 12 days out of a month. Apparently, that, that, they're not happy with that, and they would like that reduced. So I wanted to at least bring it up publicly so that we can discuss it at our leisure, but something that somebody had brought up that they wanted me to discuss with council. And then I know the mayor touched on this at the beginning of the meeting, but we are kind of in uncharted waters here with the coronavirus. And so, you know, the great thing about T U K is that when things get really hard, is we all come together, and we put down our division and our differences, and we work to make those who are the, maybe the weakest link in our community, we help out, and we make sure that they have what they need. So make sure that you're following the experts, make sure that you are doing what you need to do to keep your fam, yourself and your family safe. But let's come together and let's help one another through this. And, you know, at the end of this, if everybody says it was an overreaction, and nobody is sick or hurt, or God forbid, you know, there, there was a death or something like that happen, then you know it, call it an overreaction, and I will be happy to, to get behind that. So that's it.
First, I'd like to congratulate everyone who was re-elected, reappointed, and our newbie, Ryan, congratulations to you, sir. We are in definitely uncharted territory right now, so I don't think anybody really knows what's going to happen. Liz, Kelly, and whomever else is with you, completely and totally respect your right to come up and speak and ask the questions. I know that I personally have spent a lot of time answering questions, and I believe most everybody else in council has done so as well. You know, I would just like to say that, you know, we were all elected to, to try and do what we think is right for the city, and some months ago, we did so. I, I know, Alicia, you don't agree, and that's fine, you know, that's what democracy is all about. But I would really love to put this behind us, to equate it with the situation with the, the water system and the sewage bills. I think that was a much larger thing than, than what we're dealing with here. But there's so much divisiveness going on right now, and we have a, not just a national, but an international crisis with this virus. As Heather said, maybe we're overreacting, maybe we're not, I don't know. But it's probably going to get a little bit worse before it gets better, and we need to be looking out for each other and, and looking forward and not looking backwards at this point. You know, it's, it's been really heartening to me to look at a lot of things that I've seen posted on social media over the last few days. You know, people offering supplies, people offering to take lunches to kids, and I know the school system is taking care of that, but people offering to take lunches to people that, you know, that might be the only lunch they get. People that have managed to get their hold of some supplies before the hoarders got to them, that have offered up those things. And everybody that's offered it so far has said, I don't want anything for it. You know, PM me, I'll drop it on your front porch, and I'll hand sanitize it before I leave. That's what, that's what T K K is all about, and that's the T K K that I love, and that's why I'm up here serving.
All right, thank you. I, I do think, I think we're overreacting, and I don't think we're doing enough at the same time. This is, it's just, that's right, we are. There's just so much uncharted territory here. It's, I'll go to a meeting at nine o'clock in the morning, and by 11:15, everything's out the window, everything's changed. So I thought, why do I even go to this nine o'clock meeting? Nothing's like that. So it's just, it's, I was in meetings all day, and then I get emails, and I get phone calls, and people wanting to know what they're supposed to do with their children. And I said, you know, I can't answer that. You know, it's your children. There's got to be some level of personal responsibility out there when it comes to going to parks, playing golf, going to the grocery store. There's just some things we can't, we can't do for you. You know, you're just going to have to work on it yourself, but just try to be safe and try not to get anybody else sick, if anybody is sick. Anything else last before we close it up? Because this is my favorite part of the evening. I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?